All right. Good morning and welcome to the February 16, 2022, meeting of the Shenandoah IDA Board. We go ahead and roll, call ourselves in.
Blatchard here.
Raymond here.
Zeno here.
Corey here.
Burton here. Agenda item number two is the reading of the IDA mission statement. Our mission is to promote, develop, encourage, and assist in the acquiring, construction, reconstruction, improvement, maintaining, equipping, and furnishing industrial manufacturing, warehousing, commercial research, and recreation facilities, including industrial pollution control facilities, educational or cultural facilities, railroad facilities, and continuing care retirement communities, to provide financial assistance and thereby advance the job opportunities, health, general prosperity, and economic welfare of the people of the county of Shenango, and to improve their recreation opportunities, prosperity, and standard of living. Everybody have a chance to look over the minutes, hopefully, from January 18th. Need a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Okay, can I get a second?
One second.
Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Blatchard aye.
Raymond aye.
Zeno aye.
Corey aye.
Burton aye. Financial report.
Okay, thank you. So start of the new year, not a, not a whole lot of activity, but a few things I want to point out. So on the first page, state of the financial position. You'll see that our accounts receivable number is quite larger than normal. It's because we have built out all of the pilots for the, for the new year. So that's why that number is 52,000. Usually that's only probably less than 10, so that's why the number is so large. You'll see that on the next page. The financing lease under item number two is the cash flow lease, and I do have some updates on that when we finally get to that part of the agenda. Our total current assets sit at $823,000. Our total assets, including property and equipment, is just over $1.4 million. Under our liability and fund balance, item number five is the accounts payable, and I wrote a couple things when we get to that page. Number six is prepaid rental income. Just a reminder that that includes the deposit from Protel for the building that they are renting from us at the airport. Also, that includes a $1,000 offer that they gave us, a $1,000 check for the purchase offer that they gave to us back in the, back in the fall. So that money is just sitting there until we decide what we're doing with that property. Under our fund balance, we have just over $1.4 million, which puts our total liability and fund balance at $1,450,998. Under our age receivables, I do want to note that we did receive payment from Norwich Shenango Solar. That account is current. It's just not reflected on this because we received it after we pulled the financials. So that is very happy. We're very excited about that. That was a, we didn't have to do anything further to collect that. So that account is being full. And you'll see the rest of the pilot payments that we built out at the beginning of the year. So this is something that our bookkeeper does annually. These are for all approved pilots for their annual fee. Does anybody have any questions on that? Anyway, some newer board members who might not have seen this pilot schedule yet. Okay. On the next page are age payables. The bond Shenanigans came out there that you see, $1,000. That is for conversations and research related to disposition of a property that we own at the airport, as well as the property purchases that we've been looking to, to make. So they've been helping us make our way through what our disposition policy is, the steps we have to take to purchase a property, and, and those items. So that is actually our amount, not something that's going to get built out to, to a pilot. Under statement of activities, again, it's, it's the start of the year, so this is pretty quiet. Couple things I did want to note. Under the pilots, you'll see there has been no activity, activity under orbit or high bridge wind. So you'll see a negative amount for the Morbid Solar property project. When we did the budget last year, we thought that project would be closed already and that we would have built an annual fee. But because it hasn't closed, we don't even have a closing cost yet, that is going to get pushed out. So that's why you'll see a negative there until we actually close and they pay us for the pilot, and then that will actually be higher than an expense because we had that budget item as a revenue last year. Same with high bridge wind. I do know, well, actually, yes, I won't be talking about updates, sorry. And then under expenditures, everything, again, it's quiet, it's the beginning of the year, nothing, nothing out of turn, but our numbers are right where they need to be. Under, on the last page, under page five, last month, you did ask me where we're going to start to see the utilities expense, even though we're getting reimbursed for it. So Kathy Jo did add a line item under here, airport utilities is note two. So we are putting that amount in as an expense item, but just a reminder, Protel is reimbursing that to us. But that's where it sits on the financial statement. And that's all I have on my list. Let's see if you have questions.
Okay, need a motion to approve the financials?
So moved.
Yep, just second, Mike first. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Blatchard aye.
Raymond aye.
Zeno aye.
Corey aye.
Burton aye. Okay, 2021 audit.
Just a note here to let you know that the audit has begun. They've been working, and Sarah and company has been working really hard on taking a look at our financials. Kathy Jo submitted our backup of our books last week. Carrie Anne has done a great job getting them every piece of paper that they've been looking for, leaving me only a few items that I have to address, which has been really helpful. You all received a letter in your email from, that I forwarded you from their behalf, letting you know that the audit was beginning. You may also receive a questionnaire in the mail. Sometimes they do that. So that, that is happening. The other part, I just want to let you know too, part of the audit process is the questionnaire for the pilot projects has been sent to all of our pilot properties. Again, this is one of those things from the ABA overview that we needed to make sure that we're being really clear about. So letting you know that those pilot questionnaires were sent out, we are receiving it back. We have also asked for their ST340 form, which is that sales tax form. So we've instituted a process to collect the ST340, even from previous years where we might not have gotten it, so that we're actually tracking how much sales tax that they're using and making sure it's within what their approved pilot was.
Do we have a deadline on the return of those?
Yes, we actually asked for it by this Friday because the auditors need it, and we need it when we upload into Paris to do our, our annual review.
Can we get those on the agenda for next month to review?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, yep, so we're gonna have, yep, the next item for to review, all of the, all of the submit, yeah, yep, absolutely. And we'll walk you through them and what we're asking them and what they're submitting back. And we're trying to go back as far as we can, especially for the ones that we did not have a record of that came up in the audit. Some of the projects are very old, but if any project is still open and current, we've asked that they go back as far as their records have to get those forms, so that we have an accurate, whatever they don't have in hand, we can submit to the state and ask for a copy. But everyone's been really agreeable so far. And that's on financials.
All right, bills and invoices.
I just want to make a note about the airport utilities. Kathy Jo brought this to our attention. It's very high this month. We, Karen, what'd you say? They skipped a bill, they skipped a month, and I said, when they read the meters, it's, so it's like two months worth, and that's why it's so high. So just let you know that.
Happens in my house, too.
Oh, does it? Okay, I just wanted you to be alarmed why it was so high, but again...
Always, when you get that bill, it's twice or three times as high as your normal bill, yeah. Meter reading. Yep. Any other questions on the bills and invoices? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Any other conversation? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Blatchard aye.
Raymond aye.
Zeno aye.
Corey aye.
Burton aye. Looks like we're onto the presentation. Everything Bagel Re.
Welcome back, guys and pilots.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
How are you?
Excellent. Especially staying warm. Getting winter here. I actually got a little bit of break from winter, and I had to move some gear from my warehouse in Dallas, so I got a little bit of nice weather, and then came back and more freaking out.
I think you just have to turn on and then...
So I'm in HD, oh.
HD, I'm...
Do you have sound?
No.
I'm just gonna speed over. Always.
Have you guys...
Doing nice?
Good.
My son picked out the tie for me. Yeah, this is the first time that my son, he was like, I gotta wear it for good luck today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody has a packet, right? Good morning. This is the Everything Bagel Re Company. We are a top-quality handmade artisan product here in the local community that has just launched on October 11th. Every single one of our bagels is handmade. We're going to try to not use machines as much as possible. There are a couple reasons to this. One is the actual quality of the product from a hand-rolled piece of dough versus the machine. It is one of the reasons we believe our bagels are so popular. It has a lot to do with the consistency and the, and the, and the shape and the squish and the chew. For some reason, the, the machines do not build enough surface tension, is what I think I believe, because we spend a lot of time to get it to a ball first, to get the surface tension, and then hand form them, and that is one of the reasons that keeps our product really good. The other thing is that it, it keeps labor in the hands of humans, as opposed to just automating everything. In a day where AI is taking over almost everything, we thought it was really important to have a product that still required handmade talent from the local community. We are community-driven. Everything from our business model and what we believe, from why we decided to be a wholesale bagelery, as opposed to come in and compete in a small retail market. We, our plan is to create economic velocity throughout our communities as we use all local suppliers and all of our retailers are local as well. We have spent a lot of time in branding to encapsulate the beauty and solitude of upstate New York. Upstate New York does not get a lot of credit for, for many things, and Long Island bagels have long been synonymous with the, you know, the ultimate bagel in the world, and we think it's time to bring a little bit of upstate New York on the map and possibly compete there. And then finally, coming to a city near you, we do have a plan to take this to a national franchise eventually. However, we will never open a retail location in anything but a major metropolitan market because we do not, once again, want to compete against the local community in the small retail space. And it will also, this will be the home and the hub, no matter how big we get and how we grow, we plan on making this the headquarters so that anything that gets produced and sent nationwide will all come from the 607. And so that is the Everything Bagel Re Company. Now, looking through your packets, start on page one. So we just recently were put in a food poll by 607 Foodies. It's a, it's a group on Facebook that their, their entire purpose is to look at all of the different local area eateries and offerings and so forth, and to try to help promote them and draw them business. Well, they, because of all the other people in the area that have started to make bagels as well, they decided to put a little poll and do a contest to see what the area thought was the best bagel. As you can see, we won by a landslide, 203 votes out of the 272 total voted. So I thought that was a good visual to show you guys, that we already have traction and brand recognition, and a lot of big fans around the area. And they've even gone as far as to advertise on their page where to find the best bagels in the 607. They have listed us and then all of our local retailers and the communities that we are currently serving. Moving on to that third page, is our list of retailers, suppliers, suppliers and community served. As you can see, we have 16 local retailers all throughout the area that are selling our bagels, like hotcakes. And then this is the list of local suppliers, like, for instance, we partnered with Hucik Honey Farm, we purchase all of our honey from there. We get all of our maple syrup from Winchester's Shurjack, and so forth and so on. All of these companies, from design to print to labels to our merchandise, are part of the community that we have organized together to set forth on our mission. And then currently, our town served. We're currently retailing in Acton, Bainbridge, Sidney, Unadilla, Otigo, O'Neal, Morris, Mount Vision, Maryland, and many to come. We've got many more inquiries, but we are pretty much at max capacity and can no longer take anyone on. We did have a retailer in Norwich, but Garstelli is now closing and changing to a barbecue spot, so they no longer want our bagels for barbecue. But that, so there is that. Okay, moving down to our current projections, this current projections sheet is what we are currently doing without, and, and without hope of help from the, from the IDA. You guys had asked me, you know, for the projections, so I wanted to first show you where I thought we were at by ourselves, without anything, under our current model. And so that BPD number is bagels per day, so that it gives you an idea of what our expected output is that we're basing all of these figures on as we go through. The following sheet is showing you what we believe our projections would be with the help of the IDA and helping us secure this building, and so that we can get this expansion picked out a little quicker than just the normal cash flow model. We currently have no debt. We financed this all by ourselves, a lean startup, $12,000 invested by the four partners. And, you know, we, we have no debt, we're already at cash flow, and there's $18,000 in the bank in just four months.
Four partners.
There's four partners in total.
You two?
You two, yep. And the other guys are in the kitchen still. Again, like, I had to pull him from the kitchen, we're such a small operation that we can't really stop or we won't be able to continue serving.
Also local guys.
Also local guys, everyone's from here. And, and so to give you an idea of, of some of our other partners' experience, our one partner, Eric, who's one of the kitchen managers, he used to manage McDonald's, has worked in restaurants his whole life. He's a...
What, 25 now?
25.
Yeah, he just turned 25, so he's rather young, but has a, his entire working career experience has been in restaurant and in food industry. Eric, or Ian Yoder, our other partner, has worked in pizzerias and kitchens and restaurants galore for the past 15 years, I'll say, give or take, and, you know, his dough experience and so forth is, is what, you know, one of his main focuses and, and one of his asset and advantages. Tyler also has plenty of experience in and out of kitchens and whatnot. My main business, my main thing to the table is the business experience. I have worked in pizzeria a long time ago, that's where I learned to roll dough and that kind of stuff. I have been an avid home cook because I grew up in a, in a family that, like, you know, my great uncle was the first born here from Italy in Walton, and so, like, one of the family traditions was making handmade pastas and breads and whatever. And so I've always kind of loved being in the kitchen and being part of this kind of thing. I've just never taken it to a level of this. And so now I'm applying all of these great recipes and my business acumen to, to creating this venture, and that's what, that's what I come to the table here.
So technically, you have four employees right now? They just all happen to be...
Well, no, we, we're not, we're, none of us are paying ourselves yet. We're all going to work as, as working partners. We're, we don't, I, I didn't believe that us hiring ourselves would qualify as employees. So when I say number of employees that we plan on hiring or whatever, that's people outside of us.
Outside of the four.
Outside of the four. The four, us four are already in, in this, in, into the hall and, and working diligently. Definitely, yeah. Let's see, moving on to... So I gave you a basic expense breakdown. If you wanted something more detailed with all, like, you know, I do have a sheet of all the materials of how I came up with the 15 cents a bagel and whatnot. I did have to do some averaging in that. Our prices are changing every day. For instance, flour just went up another $2 a bag and so forth, and so I added a little in there, and I averaged this up to 15 cents a bagel to make sure that we could cover all of that. And last is our current list of assets. It's not much. We didn't have to buy much to start into this because the current facility that we are renting had a numerous amount of equipment all in it because it was a, the previous subway, and so that's all kind of part of our lease. So our, our list of assets is small currently, but again, we have, we have netted about 18,000 cash in the bank currently. And we have literally been in business exactly four months and four days. Four months and four days since our launch. And we are here, hoping you guys would like to help us on this next leg of the journey to really expand this to the, to the, to where it could be. We purposely have not hit the southern tier yet. We purposely have not gone into grocery stores yet, although we do have a lot of interest. And then finally, again, Rabidos is, and, and talks with us about potentially being their bagel supplier at potentially all 128 locations in them. And so we're very excited about all those opportunities, but we cannot really, cannot really take any more gigs on, so to speak, until we can expand our current operation. Right now, our equipment only allows us to boil six at a time and bake 24 at a time. In this new facility, we will be able to boil 144 at a time and bake 240 at a time. So it will extremely maximize the efficiency of the current labor being used. In other words, we'll be able to output almost five times the amount of bagels we're currently producing with the same amount of labor that we currently have, just because of the equipment upgrades and the space that will allow us to really move.
Do you get contracts with all these people, or is it just good faith?
It's, we don't have contracts, no. Right now, currently, it is good faith, but it is all pre-order. In other words, like, we don't make a bagel until someone orders it. So, so, you know, the retailer will call and say, hey, a lot of them have a schedule and say, hey, every Tuesday, Thursday at 1:00 PM, we want this many bags, and we do that. Some retailers start with X amount of bags on Monday, and then will call us by Tuesday or Wednesday, or Thursday and Friday, and, you know, and get two or three deliveries. We, it really depends on, we, we've tried to work with each individual retailer as it, as it works for them. A lot of them don't have the same buying power or same, you know, retail, retail power, we should say. For instance, you know, Heinrich Grocery obviously sells a lot more bagels than Donna's Home Treats, who's selling them, you know, individually out of just Unadilla or whatever. So there is that. But basically, they order in advance, and so everything is paid for and ordered before we send it out. Now, there is a little bit of time that we do have, some accounts receivable, but that never goes more than 72 hours, and everything goes direct through our square and is invoiced online and billed in the customer's pay direct. Unfortunately, our online website and merchandising is not complete yet. There's a lot of backend work still being developed there, but we do have a full merchandise line, hoodies, sweatshirts, tumblers. We did a 12 Days of Christmas giveaway, it was really popular, we gave away one of each of these items. And so it's almost up, actually, I'm not even bothered because we only got a couple items on it, but we've almost got that done, and we've almost got the, the online ordering via app. So then, like, you know, at the office, you can call in and say, hey, we need 48 bagels sent to NBT Bank, we need 48 bagels sent to whatever, and you can, you know, and we're gonna try to go, that'll be our first entry into, to direct to customer. Other than that, we're strictly business to business.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
You mentioned that you have some grocery stores and things interested. How are you sort of gauging the interests of these stores?
I am, it's, it's grassroots marketing, literally knocking on doors, shaking hands, meeting and greeting the public. That's how we landed every single one of these accounts, and that's how I continue to, you know, I plan on continuing to do it in the future. And we've had such a great response, every time, like, it's almost like they knew who we are before we walked in. And we said, hey, we're, oh, we've heard about you guys. Yes, please, we'd love to try this. You know, it's been really easy to get, to get products on shelves, and I know that that's gonna change, but I'm focused and dedicated on, on doing whatever it takes on my end to make sure that the sales continue, just with the current demand that we have right now, to, to be able to gauge, also based on the populations of the areas that we're currently serving. Once we start moving into the southern tier and whatnot, where the populations immediately start to get larger, and then we really, like, allow the O'Neal market to start taking off and keeping, holding on the reins there because we just can't output enough. I mean, the, the demand is there. We currently can't even produce enough for who's ordering now with the 16 that we have, so.
If all this goes as planned, how soon before you're up and operating in a new location?
So I would assume that it's pretty much, if you said yesterday and you signed all the paperwork, it'd still take about 60 days for the closing and wherever, and wherever, the wherever. I mean, we're, we're ready to start the day we can get in. And in fact, the day we do, could be, are, are able to sign the letter of intent, whatever, because I know the person that owns the building, I'm going to ask of them to let us get started while we're waiting for all that, so that the day that, that closing is over, you know, we can pretty much walk in. Now, the nice thing about the building in its current condition is it does not require a lot of, a lot of build-out to be kitchen-ready. It's just simply adding a third base, or adding a three-basin to pre-existing plumbing, and all of our equipment is electric, so it literally plugs right into the wall, it gets moved in the spot, and then we have to put up the whiteboard and stainless. But I mean, it'll take me about 48 to 72 hours of the team to get that all up and ready, and then just move in equipment, and then we'll be ready to go. So I mean, we're ready to start whenever we can, but we will patiently wait as long as necessary to see how this opportunity can unfold for us, of course.
I spoke with Sue yesterday, who did the appraisal. She went, the day that we had the storm. I think she slowed it down. She did both of our appraisals that day. She doesn't have the final appraisal that she could give me, but she did tell me verbally that she feels like it's a good price for what, what he's asking of the building, the structure of the building, the sound. There's nothing that, you know, was an issue that she thought, you know, obviously, we need the official appraisal before we can formally ask, you know, make an offer if we decide to do that, but she did want, you know, did say it's a sound building, and she thought it was a very fair price.
Yes, absolutely.
Anybody else got any more questions?
Yeah, I, I have a couple questions on the organization itself.
Yes, sir.
You've got four equal partners, is that how I mean that?
Correct.
And do you have any lines of authority? I mean, who's making the final decisions when...
So there is an operating agreement, and we can get you a copy of all that, but it's, it's based on vote. Everyone has equal rights, and we all sit and talk, and we meet, and we make decisions, and, you know, like, so like, basically, every other week or so, we're all making punch lists, guys in the kitchen of like, we ran into this, 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 and we all sit down and be like, okay, here's our issues, what solutions are being, whatever, and then we take steps and implement. And so, like, you know, we are a, a pretty good working team together. We've all known each other for many, many years, so that really helps in whatever. I mean, I, I tend to lead the, lead the cart, so to speak, you know, and, and, and a lot of the business, you know, things that happen, but they all have, absolutely have equal say, and how we, how we, whatever, and we are an S corp, an LLC S corp is our technical entity.
So you're the administrative sales, marketing side of it. The other three, all kitchen, production?
Correct, correct. And then he also, he also does a, a bit of the marketing, sales, and whatever with me. Yeah, and I also throw in the kitchen every once in a while, too. So it is a, it's a team effort all the way through and through.
The other two are always in the kitchen.
They are always in the kitchen, yeah, yeah.
So what, what happens if you come into, as things get bigger, it gets more complicated? What happens if you hit a deadlock? I mean, you got two-two vote. Thought about how you would settle something like that?
So we have a process, and it would come down to, it, it would come down to the, the financial, you know, part of how that, you know, how all those decisions get made. It would, it would, it would come down to a vote, and if we ended in a two-two deadlock, we would have to, we would have to pull in someone else to, some sort of board of advisors would have to be created, I think. So far, obviously, we haven't run into any of those problems. And technically speaking, you know, Eric and Ian, they don't really have never disagreed with anything that we've ever wanted to do. Not to say that they won't, but that is a very, that is a very valid point, a very valid question, and we would be open to any suggestions you thought that might need to be addressed to make that a, a more suitable circumstance, if and, if and when that arises. Would you be open to suggestion about that?
Good questions, Mike. I kind of had the same thoughts as Mike. You know, right now, when you're bringing in $51,000 a year versus when your net projected profit is three quarters of a million dollars a year, opinions change. Everybody wants their piece of the pie, and things happen, so great questions.
I can say that we have planned to, as far as like how profits would be distributed and whatever, right now, and especially in the beginning, we plan on bankrolling at least 60% of all of our profits, if not more. We will be distributing some as we go, when, when profits are there, to, to pay the partners for all their hard work, but everybody else already has gainful employment and means of making money and, and, and whatever to, to be living enough to where we don't need this to eat, you know, so we all can work on this and not need to draw. I think it's really important that we, we bankroll that cash flow so that we can expand into all the areas that we would like to go and not always be in need of, of financing. It's, it's typically how I like to do anything anyway. It's it's typically how I like to do anything anyway. I use financing when necessary, but we don't wanna over depend on anything like that and we wanna, we wanna be up on our own two feet as soon as possible.
And all four of you would sign up on the lease? The business, but all of them would sign?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh on your profit projections, I didn't do the math and when I work at the county, I would believe that to Jeff, I'm sure. But uh just looking at it face value, you say you're not getting paid now, so these projections have salaries included and built in?
They do not. So those projections, now that's where that so that there's, you know, a forty percent profit margin, net profit margin. And then so out of that is where we would take and we would only distribute uh you know, upwards of forty percent of the leftover profits among the four partners as partner distribution.
So I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch exactly what you're doing. Is are they retained earnings that stay within the operation?
Yeah, so like
Formula for that?
Yes, so we're, we're gonna go for a a sixty forty, that sixty percent of all earnings minimum go back into the business and operating expenses and only upwards of forty percent would ever get distributed. And that's currently where we're at there. So that that's correct. All the partners pay would depend on having a successful bottom line at the end of the year as opposed to taking it off the top. And that also allows us to put all that money into employees and whatnot, like, you know, as we grow. And so like they will be the first focus, that they get paid first, we get paid less. And I think that's the fairest way to do it. It also keeps us striving to work hard to make sure that that we're doing what we gotta do so that we can, you know, earn well off of it as well.
So the owners are legitimately only gonna take a K one?
Correct, yep.
Annually.
K one distribution.
It's there.
We might end up going to quarter distributions, but in the beginning, correct. It's going to be an annual thing for the first couple of years. And then once we know that I have approved, you know, that everything is looking nice and none of the cash flow gets interrupted or crazy or whatever, then we'll consider moving to a a a quarter distribution.
So how are you gonna increase your production as much as you're planning and everybody keep their full time job?
They won't be able to keep their full time job. Correct. So it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a half and half transition. Half of that transit, well, a big part of being able to ramp up production is 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 equipment and space. Equipment and space will allow the same amount of labor that we're doing right now and we will be able to increase our output almost fivefold just with equipment and space. So then moving into that, the amount of revenue that will be coming in will hopefully allow that that slow transition of when over the next two to three years that all the partners will be able to focus full time on that and be paid from the company. And at the same time, we're going to be hiring employees sporadically to help also increase that ramped up production.
Uh on the subject of ramped up production, you go, you hit it pretty hard. You're gonna go uh six times more. Uh you were talking about how the taste and the texture of this bagel does really well when it's really hand worked and done with that kind of craftsmanship.
Correct.
What kind of equipment you have and how do you keep that quality level? Do you have plans for quality?
Oh, yeah.
Assurance, how do you, how do you maintain? How do you get larger numbers and get just as good bagels?
And maintain the quality.
Close your way of saying.
Yeah, no, understood. Again, i- i- let me try to try to explain our whole process to give you an idea of how much that boiling and bake bottleneck us. Only being able to boil six and bake twenty four at a time really bottlenecks the process. The actual time it takes to handle and form everything is not that ridiculous. And in fact, so one machine that we're going to add in our new operation that we're not currently using is a dough divider. It's still a manual press, we put the blob in, boom, I've got thirty six equal four ounce pieces of dough. Currently, the whole wad comes on the table from the dough mixer and it is hand cut and weighed in four sections. And so it will eliminate that process and then the the speed of rolling is not that bad. And so basically, four people can handle five thousand bagels in about four to six hours. In about four to six hours, five thousand bagels can be handled. And that's not getting crazy, that's not like we have been in the kitchen times, that's, you know, a nice even pace. And um also, that is still including that we're hand cutting. Uh that timeframe is with still hand cutting and weighing each piece. So by uh we would eliminate a hundred and thirty eight knife cuts per single drop and all that time saved there, for instance. And then again, you know, the ramping up of the equipment, being able to bake two hundred and forty at once, because we can throw five trays in this oven, five trays in that oven, makes things go a lot quicker. There's a lot of times two guys are standing around, we got two trays in, we're all waiting, waiting, waiting. Okay, next, now we can start the next one. So there's a lot, we have a lot of pause because of our lack of space and equipment efficiency.
And then how long is the boil-bake process?
So the boil process is about thirty to forty five seconds per time. That happens really quickly. The bake process, depending on, so we change temperatures and all and weather and whatever. Let's just say about sixteen minutes to seventeen minutes is the average. Certain doughs are different, like the French toast and the cinnamon raisins sometimes take a little bit longer, et cetera, et cetera. So the, you know, you know, round and about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen minutes is is the rate where we're at. And approximately three hundred and eighty five to three hundred and ninety five degrees, depending on the day and so forth and the relative humidity.
And the oven temperature always varies because we're always opening and closing it because we only have two trays in there.
Right, and in this current space that we have, the heating system is not working, so we've had difficulty. So tha- that's another good thing is that, you know, we've been able to maintain quality and whatever with the most ridiculous variables and environmental conditions for a bakery. You know, that's one of the things that most bake shops get under control immediately. We just haven't had the luxury because of the current place that we're renting, unfortunately. And the owner of said building doesn't wanna redo the whole heating system and all this and that. And we certainly don't wanna spend seventeen thousand dollars on it. And we didn't wanna spend seven thousand dollars to add the power that they said they had when we signed the lease. So that's one of the reasons we can only operate so much equipment. We would have already bought a bigger oven or this and that if we actually had a place that we could power it up without having to make major renovations to his current building.
And then just that very last stage of production, is that just the delivery and packaging?
Yeah, the last stage of production is they sit on a rack and cool, then they get thrown in a bag and sent on off the market.
What's the plan without us?
Uh you you, the current projection, the the plan without you is the is to continue cash flow, is to can you continue building organically and growing off of the cash flow? Not to say that we might not take out some loans. Right now, if we were told no by you guys, we'll immediately hit the pavement and start looking to rent a better location than where we're currently at. No matter what happens here, we can't stay where we are. It's just, it's not going to be conducive to be able to do anything with this business properly. So one way or another, we're going to find another place and we're going to continue as we go. It'll just happen slower, you know, a good bit slower.
I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but you're talking about atmospheric controls and manufacturing and how there was humidity, heat.
Yeah, absolutely.
Building that we're looking at, is that?
Yeah.
Up the bar?
It is, it really is. And he's done a really good job insulating it all. It had a whole spray foam layer thrown in crawl space. So yeah, i- it is the airflow and whatever and and the design of the building and how we'll be able to section it off for like, you know, like the the cooler room and the dough room is going to be divided off and we'll have the plastic grate. So that we'll be able to stay at a nice sixty degrees and then the cooler will be under forty and and then moving out to the front where we'll have the baking and packaging where the temperature doesn't matter as much. Actually, in during the baking process and whatever, that temperature and whatever, we haven't had any issues with that. And uh it's mo- it's mostly water temperature and air temperature where they're being uh when we're boiling and proofing and creating the dough, that's where, you know, uh we need the most control. But it doesn't have, it's, it's not scientifically sterile. It doesn't need to be an exact seventy two degrees and forty five percent relative, you know, it's it's not that crazy. But there is, there there is a lot to say with um with how the quality of the product, how long it takes to proof and 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 those things based on the temperature and 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 so forth in the air.
What other brands are there on the market that have a similar platform to this?
A similar platform?
Like homemade bagels or?
A similar platform, unless you're talking about like going to New York City and seeing, you know, you know, and and going on to the old mom and pop shop kind of things there. Even a lot of them are all machine done that these days, though, that, you know, any of those kind of outputs. Around here, um as you can see on our list, you know, there are a couple other places. I don't, I'm not familiar with all of them. We just heard about a few of them for the first time in this contest that took out. For instance, Erica's Bakery just started making bagels again two weeks ago because she saw the popularity that we were having. Bagels and cream and delhi apparently has been around for a while. However, most of like we have, we currently serve some of the customers that used to go to them that now prefer our bagels. He just finally spoke to Five Kids Bake House. They're interested in me and and
They wanna buy our bagels.
Right.
And they also, if if we proceed and do the flower thing that we were talking about last time you were here.
Which I didn't put any of that in this because we, I just wanted to focus on on what we're, you know, those are all just maybe potential areas of being able to expand in the future.
They would be interested in buying the flower from us.
Correct. Yeah, um so there are, you know, there are some that are close, but none, none, none trying to hit the same categories that we are. Clean ingredient, handmade, local, and you know, the economic velocity. Because, you know, it's one thing to just make a bagel and sell it here, but if you're buying all of your materials from New York City or whatever, whatever, then a certain amount of that money is is leaving the community. And you know, so the economic velocity is really important to us. So no one is technically hitting that mark. I think the 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 model to look at is Einstein Brothers Bagels. They're the largest, you know, the the bagel industry is over two million dollar a year industry. Einstein's command's about four hundred and twenty million of that market per per annum. And uh they specialize in a higher end artisan style bagel, but it is still machine done. And there is no local community sourcing, economic velocity, whatever, and they'll pop up anywhere and compete against the retail market against anyone. So, you know, but they are a super popular brand. Bagels and uh health foods in general um are seeing a a a nice increase in the market, about thirteen percent annually. And the largest growing sector in food, period, is the clean ingredient, healthy eating kind of kind of thing that we're gonna see, you know, the big spikes in. So we're, we're in a good spot. And then again, like because of how large this market share is, we only need to even scratch a tiny little percent of it to be able to hit the numbers that we would like. And I actually think that's one of the most important parts about, you know, understanding market cap and our position in market cap and, you know, not wanting to necessarily be Walmart and having to, you know, have a a location on every corner and whatever and make millions of dollars just to even pay the bills or whatever. We'd, we'd like to keep it. We wanna go, you know, we wanna expand into a large company eventually or whatever, but we're still gonna have that hometown feel and we're gonna still, you know, keep a close eye on on how all that works. Yeah. Any other questions? Or concerns or?
How many different, how many different uh? Flavors?
Varieties? Currently, we offer a lot. We, so we're working on that. That's a recipe we gotta work on. Use utilizing different flowers to create that same kind of, that's where it gets tricky. We can make a gluten free bagel, but will it taste exactly like what we're currently offering? No, and so that's what we're trying to nail. And we might not do that, might not be able to nail it and we might just, you know, offer gluten free bagels as best as we can make it. We have had, you know, um some requests for that. But, you know, not, not huge. It's, i- it is something that is gonna come up and we we would like to figure that out. But currently, we offer about thirteen varieties and we're always creating more. And in fact, we have a couple signature varieties of of, so like, for instance, our, one of our retailers, Trollak Farm, they're a Swedish farm. In other words, he he, his whole family's from Sweden and they source a lot of like the local Swedish stuff and this and that. One of their, their things that we don't have here is called lingonberry and they use a cardamom granola. And so we're creating a Trollak Lingonberry Cardamom Granola Bagel that will be their signature bagel that only gets sold there. We partnered up with Mike Gavin's Pizzeria and we're getting ready to do a limited run of pizza bagels that will only be sold there. Winchester Sugar Shack, who supplies our maple sugar and also is a small retailer that's seasonal and has their own little farm stand that sells our bagels. That, you know, the Winchesters Maple Syrup French Toast Bagel. You know, so we're, we're, we're also working to create like specific branded items that tie in and like help us all kind of work together. So that's been really cool. And so we're, we're not done developing recipes. And in fact, the next thing to hit the table is our cream cheese recipes. And I even have plans to go speak to Chubani about being our potential co-packers to go ahead and launch our cream cheese since they're fully vertically integrated with all the material stock, machines, printing, everything ready to go, including national brand recognition. And I think that, you know, with that, uh the community spirit and whatever, that that company, you know, their ethos also operates on, I think it would be a great partnership and also help us launch and springboard into the national, into the national market.
Are you looking at a partnership or a contract or like a packaging contract?
Yeah, uh most likely a co-packaging contract, but if they wanted to do some, you know, sky's the limit with them, right? Sky's the limit with them, you know, I I'm gonna, I haven't approached them yet because we wanted to get a little more under our belt and all this and that and 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 be ready to take that step when it's, when it's proper. We're getting close to that and I'm still developing recipes in the kitchen for that cream cheese stuff. But we're gonna offer about six different varieties of that. And we've got some exciting flavors that we're playing with, like a pomegranate, dark chocolate. And I wanna do a lemongrass thyme and and uh and dill. We're gonna mess around with a whole bunch of stuff, a maple walnut, uh potentially, yeah. So yeah, we're, we're playing around with a bunch of different ideas because though, that's another big thing, like uh that Einstein's offers that is one of the things that makes them popular, I think, is the uh the flavored smear, so to speak, you know, adding that that extra level. And then the other thing that we'd like to do with it is also bring along our honey and maple syrup partners to get co-packaged too so that we can make little single serving dipping cups of the maple syrup or the different honeys that Q-Tix offers as a little, a little upsell dipping thing for, you know, for for the clients to add as well. So, you know, we have a lot of cool big plans. It's just gonna happen slower without you. It's going to happen one way or another and it will happen much slower without you. And we really appreciate your time, so thank you very much for for taking the time and considering us.
Thank you. Anything else? Gentlemen, thank you for your time today. Appreciate you coming back.
Thank you very much.
Having answers to some of our questions from last time.
Awesome. Is there anything that you, more that you want that I did not provide you?
Take a dozen.
Sorry, yeah, I know. So our orders, we had, we had seven hundred and twenty bagels to get out this morning, so I could not spare any. That's all we can, I'm so sorry. But yes, I will, I'll play you out. You guys let me know when you're, and we'll, we'll have to like, because this happens once a month all the time, right? We'll have to start providing catering for uh so that every month you guys have a whole thing of bagels ready to go on us every time we have a meeting. We would be happy to do that.
That would probably be slightly inappropriate. But when you present, you wanna love them. Yes, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I'm new.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Do you wanna discuss it in executive session?
Yeah, I think we're, we're probably to the point as far as negotiation and stuff like that goes that we'll need to take this up in the executive session.
Okay.
Does everybody agree with that? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Good.
Great.
Uh, did everybody see the cost of the appraisal there? Kind of important. Actually, we got two buildings for the same cost, which is pretty good, considering they weren't of equal size, right?
Yeah, they weren't of equal size, yeah, so she, yeah. But when she knows, I talked to her, I don't
She does, okay.
Well, she did vote, so she knows that, yeah, I just, we made sure that you had a copy of the, what it, what it costs to do the appraisal. Thank you.
Thank you, that was good. All right, uh executive director report.
Yeah, so I will um get through this. So on the Commerce Shingo's side, um I don't remember if I talked about this last
You did, I forgot, because we met right after the last meeting.
Okay, that was, okay, so that Brian and Brandy are now, or Brian and Pete, I'm sorry. Are now on the Commerce Shingo Executive Committee. They restructured back a little bit to include all of the organizations under Commerce Shingo to make sure that every organization is represented at the highest level. So that first meeting is Monday. So thank you both for agreeing to do that. We are meeting with the board next Thursday to review the final strategic plan. So my hope is that once the board approves that, that we can present it to the I D A at a future meeting. Probably not March, since March is our reorganizing and that tends to be a little bit longer, but likely the April meeting, I'd like to present that to you so that you know what we've been talking about, a lot of those initiatives, you know, Commerce Shingo, it's it's all sort of one big entity. And a lot of those items that are part of that strategic plan have to do with the work that the I D A does as well, peripherally, at at least. So I just wanna be able to present that to you likely at the April meeting. Uh and just wanna make a note about some of the programming coming up on that side. This Friday, we have a notary workshop. It is the most people we have ever had for this. We do this every two years. We have forty four, forty three, forty six people signed up for the notary workshop on Friday, which is unheard of. We, we rarely ever make money on this and I don't know if just people haven't been doing these workshops or bless you, or if there hasn't been um people taking the test, but we, I mean, we still have people signing up. We thought we had a forty person cap, but the person who's doing the workshop said we can keep adding, so we've been able to do that. So there are a lot of people that'll be ready to go take that notary test, so. And on May eleventh, we are bringing back, this will be the second year of the Talent Pipeline and Population Recovery Strategy Summit. This was a brand new initiative that we did last year. We held it virtually. We're going to stay with that format. It went really well. It's going to be on May eleventh. You'll be able to, we're gonna be talking about all sorts of things. We have a a call for session speakers, which will be going out later this week. Everything having to do with, you know, how to attract a workforce, how to retain a workforce, what is it that we need, what are the barriers from growing our own population, what are the barriers to workforce settlement? You know, what are some of the new intuitive things that companies are doing? Last year, we had Preferred Mutual was one of our speakers and they talked about some of the things that they do internally to keep their staff and retain their staff. So it was really well attended last year. We're hoping it's, it's going to do just as great this year. Part of it will depend on who submits a session, sorry, who submits to do a session, uh but more on that to come. Who submits to do a session, uh, but more on that to come. And another big event that we're very excited about, we just, uh, sort of did a soft launch yesterday is, we're calling it the WBF. It's the Wine Beer and Food Festival. We're hosting it at the Shiningo County Fairgrounds on July thirtieth. Um, food trucks, wineries, breweries, local crafters and vendors. Um, it's also the, uh, yes, thank you. It's the Fairgrounds one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary this year too, so it's really exciting to be able to have this inaugural event there. We're hoping to do it every year. We're hoping it will grow. Um, we're trying not to go crazy with camping and music and all that. We're just trying to right now do beer, wine, food, all day festival, eleven to seven. We're helping with the success of it. We'll be able to build off of that, but this is, um, an event to help support tourism. It's on the tourism side of the house.
Can I just backtrack for a quick second? There's somebody new in the room today. I don't think we've all been introduced.
Did I skip staffing? Oh, that's next. But yes, sure. Sorry. Sure. Uh, this is Brianna. Brianna Minor is our, um, she's our office administrator. This is Sam Receptionist. And she has been helping us, um, with the transition with, uh, Carrie Anne leaving. Um, and she's filling in temporarily until I hire somebody new.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Um, and great segue to the next item, which is staffing. So Carrie Anne, um, technically her last day was Friday, but we're going to call it today. She has done an amazing job for us. I'm super, super sad that the state called her back. Um, we'll have to talk about slip service and how unfair it is, but I'm studying right now. Um, but Carrie Anne has done an amazing job for us. She's been here five, six months, um, has done a fabulous job managing DCC and the IDA. Um, she starts her new, new slash old job tomorrow, but has come back in a couple of days this week, came in today to make sure Brianna was all set for the meeting, has offered to, when we get somebody new for this position, has offered to even provide training as needed for them. So I just really want to thank her. She's been amazing. It's going to be very hard to replace her. Um, but she's done a great job for us, so thank you.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Good luck. So also on that note, we are actively recruiting and hiring. Um, we have, uh, two positions that we're looking to fill, both on the economic development side of the house. Um, I, we are starting interviews. Uh, I have somebody whom we actually looked to hire the last time we were looking to fill a position that at the time couldn't take the position. Um, who has since, uh, basically said that they regretted that. And so I'm meeting actually with her tomorrow. Um, she, you know, somebody that we actually offered the job to, so if she's looking to come back in, that might be a really good, um, person. We also have a number of people that have applied. So over the next couple of weeks, I'll be doing interviews and hopefully be back to, um, full house in the next month or so. Um, the position is posted on Indeed, by the way, and I did send it to all of you. So if you know anybody that might be interested, let me know. Um, I just attended the, um, the IEDC is the International Economic Development Council. We are a member of them and I attend their, I attend their annual conference each year. This year they had a leadership summit and this was held in California, um, just a few weeks ago. Very, very well done conference. Um, it really piqued my interest. There's a lot to do with rural economic development, nature development. Um, you know, population, uh, workforce development, you know, the great resignation is the, the big word we heard a lot during the conference. It was a really wonderful summit. I liked this. It was a lot smaller, a lot less people attended this than attended, than attend the annual conference. Really specialized workshops and sessions, made a lot of really great connections, got some really good ideas, um, for what we're working on here in terms of economic development. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that, that I did attend that and it was definitely worth, it was worth the time. Um, it was a very long way to go for a very short amount of time. I had some travel issues on the way out and then I maybe come home a day early because of a storm. But I got all the good things I needed to get, so, um, just wanted to let you know that I did attend that. Uh, the DRI, just quick on that, tonight is the first public workshop. So there's going to be three public workshops. It's going to mimic the first local planning committee meeting, which was last week, but this is a chance for the public to basically talk with our, um, consultants, talk about what the process is going to be, ask questions on the public side. That's tonight at six o'clock. It's happening through Zoom. There is a special website for the DRI. It's norwichdri.com. They'll have all of the information listed there, there's terms of meetings. There's videos of previous meetings. We're recording all the sessions. Um, and the link to join is also on our Facebook page, The Commerce One, as well as The City of Norwich. And I am, uh, I am co-chairing the LPC with, um, Mayor Doliver. So that is tonight at six, if you're interested. Uh, there will be a special meeting for anyone who's looking to put in a proposal. So open call for proposal is anybody who, you know, the application had a number of items in there that we were hoping to do with this money if we got it. There's obviously more people, this, it's a, there's a big area, there's a lot of buildings. There might be other people who have an idea or have a building or want to talk about a project. There is going to be a time for that. It's a very small window to submit a proposal for that. Um, and that's what they call open call for proposals. We're going to be having a special meeting just for anybody interested in applying for money. Um, I think it's going to be next Thursday. I'm just confirming that date with them today. Um, but they want to do it next week because we're going to have to have those applications in by about the third week of March. But that, if anybody asks you about that, there is still a chance to put in ideas and submit for projects. And that's all on my report. Any questions?
Any questions for Carrie at this point in time? On that grant for you, for Norwich and, you know, the application process, do many of these have local matches? One of the reasons why you have to have people really know what they're getting into?
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of different things. One of the things they looked at was private investment. They wanted to know, you know, what has been invested in the last few years locally, privately? And then what do we think that this ten million dollars will result into? So we really had to do a lot of speculating and budgeting about, well, if we brought in money for this, it would, it would equal this for additional investment and this for jobs and then all of that. Um, so there, there was that component of it. Um, as far as the DRI money is concerned, we have nine point seven million dollars private projects. So it's just anybody who has a private project. Forty percent of that can come from DRI money. Sixty percent has to be private investment. If it's a municipality or a nonprofit, it could be up to a hundred percent from the DRI money. So we're working through that with the different project sponsors. Uh, we're going to be having a meeting soon with the city superintendent and the mayor and myself and, and our people at Bergman to talk about those municipal projects, um, to look at what, what is happening there. And I also know there's been a lot of buzz too about DOT and I know we talked about it yesterday at the planning meeting about how Route twelve and East Main Tree is getting basically redone, um, in the next two years. That's why it's causing some complications with things like the smacker and, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. We're really hoping that with any projects that are happening, if any of them are street skate or lighting or parking lots or whatever, that we can do that when DOT is already planning to do their work. Um, it just makes sense to do that. So luckily we have a little bit of a head start and I think there might be a way to, to try to pair those together so we're not ripping it downtown forever. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, appreciate it. Hi, Luke.
Okay, um, so I, still nothing on Norbit and, um, uh, on Norbit or High Bridge. So I apologize. I, I, we're waiting. We, we, we check in with our attorneys after a couple of weeks. Every, every day check back with the companies and they're just being told that the companies are still, uh, working through paperwork. So. I mean, they got it, they officially got it approved at the end of last year, which is what they needed. I do know that the Guilford Wind Project, um, Chairman Sennett shared, uh, yesterday or the day before that they're going to start tree clearing over there in March. Um, so I know we're going to have to get these things closed out soon. I'm, I'm, I think I almost said this last month. I hope, I hope it happens by the next month. Um, but we'll just keep that on there and let you know if, when that actually officially closes.
So we're essentially just doing a whole day.
Yeah, we've done everything we need to do officially. It's just the, the signing and the labor work to make it, to submit it at the county. Um, and we already talked about March and the solar, they, their old pilot piece.
Keep going.
Ah, okay. So under old business, I did get an email from our auditor, uh, Al, Al Zimmerman, who did our, um, our AVO audit, our control of process audit. Uh, he emailed me back on January twenty-eighth. Um, he was getting ready to do a surgery. Um, he said that there is a direct, there was a draft report and he thought it was supposed to be ready by the middle of January, but it's been delayed. Um, he said he hopes when he gets back from his surgery, uh, he'll know better when we're going to see that first draft of the report. Um, and he said he'll be in touch as soon as he hears anything. So we should be seeing that first draft of the report soon. Um, and then the airport incubator property, again, that has also been appraised. Um, again, unofficially from Sue, we had a conversation yesterday. Um, she feels like their offer price is very fair. Um, that's her unofficial note, because I told her we were meeting today and I wanted to be able to share that with you. Um, the one thing that was holding her up was the, the fact that we don't own the land. So she's trying to do comparative appraisals, but because it's only the building and not the land, it's different than other properties around us that have gone through this. Um, so that's, she just said she should have it done by the next week or so as the appraisal. Um, I think, I think at this point, and we could move this to executive session, is, you know, ProTal's wondering kind of where we're leading. And we haven't really officially told them if, if we're doing this or not, so.
Well, how could you do it without the appraisal?
Well, they need to know if, but we haven't officially said we'll sell it.
Aren't, would you think you'd get the appraisal first and?
Yes, but we only meet once a month, so I, I need some direction. Like if the appraisal comes in next week, are we saying, it, it just, we just need to have that conversation. Like the board has not agreed and said we're selling.
We're already getting going to executive session to talk about negotiations. I think that all under.
Yeah. Um, and then under new business, uh, so we have, uh, moved forward with Kaskun pilot termination. I did finally get Don Kaskun on the phone last week. Um, just a couple of things for you to know. I, um, when I finally got him on the phone, he basically told me that he had already moved out of the building. And I said, well, I need to walk through it with you. I need to get keys. And he made a reference that the building was unsecured and that he had already canceled the insurance. So I very quickly got hold of our insurance agent, who Dan Gregory was amazing at MMT Insurance. Um, we got insurance on it right away and, um, I was able to get ahold of somebody to go secure the building. So, um, I, I can't tell you why he didn't tell me, like he was doing those things, but thankfully I got him on the phone and we were able to take care of it within about a day.
What is now our cost for insurance on that building? You know? Approximately?
If you give me a second, I can look up. I, I don't know. Um, give me one second. I have their rider right here. Um, I do have that person from, um, Baybridge, by the way, who still wants to go, uh, to purchase that building. So I have a couple of people interested. Here we go. I found it. Oh, this is just the binder. It doesn't give me a cost. So I don't know. I have the binder. I don't know if there's another cost on there. But I can have it for next meeting, just costs associated with the building, if you, you know.
Yeah, any utilities we're now responsible for, taxes and anything. And what's going to cost us to open up that building again?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and then finally, uh, there was an item in your packet. Uh, Norwich Shiningo Solar had a review done by the AVO. They, this was like our year for reviews. We had audits all over the place. This happened in the fall when we were going through the audit with, um, Mr. Zimmerman and all of that. Um, they were looking at energy projects, so they wanted to do a review of this. There were things, the things that came up in the review, you saw on the one-page summary, were pretty much the same things that came up in the AVO review. That some of the things that were supposed to be posted online weren't at the time. This is, I think, September twenty-eighth was the date that they said that they looked at our website. It didn't have certain things that it should have. Um, so, you know, we, we've already gone through those steps and those changes. Uh, you know, nothing was glaring in that report that really worried me. I don't know for you, if, you know, it was pretty minor things, but it is an official report from the AVO, so. And that was just a, a one-off audit. It wasn't anything that flagged it necessarily. I think it just sort of came up in there. And there are listed things to review, because we haven't been reviewed it yet. And that's all I have until the executive session.
Um, actually, I have one thing to add on review business, uh, in the interest of transparency, transparency. Say that word. Um, I did have a conversation with Mr. Slutman and Mr. Cam in regards to the expedition Shiningo, the rail lines. Uh, they presented to us a couple of times and our conversation was pretty general. Um, they were just kind of looking for, you know, what's, what's the IDA looking for? What information would you guys look for from us? And basically I, I, I told them to look at our mission. Um, that's, that's what we try to base our decisions on and those are the things we ask questions on. And to take a look at the, the mission and be able to, uh, answer questions in regards to those things in the, the mission statement. So just wanted to let you know that I did have that conversation with them. Uh, they are pretty excited about this and, and ingrained in the process of getting it up and running and started and, uh, you know, they believe in it. And they think it brings definitely some quality of life to the community. So. Okay? Good. All right. Uh, do we need a motion to go into executive session to talk about negotiations? Want to make that motion? Can we get a second? Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote.
Andrew Dye.
Raymond Dye.
Zena.
Corey.
Bert Dye. Uh, we ex, do we expect to take action? We may take action when we come out of executive session. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jay, thanks, Steve. Good to see you.